All right, we're gonna call this special session to order. It is Tuesday, September 16th at 6:30. We're gonna start with invocation. Ms. Robin Myers, if you can. We'll go right into the pledge after that.
Hey, Father, we're so grateful for this gathering here tonight. We pray for your wisdom and guidance for our council as they work together for the betterment of our city. Father, please walk over our city staff, public works, police, and fire departments as they conduct the work of our city and protect our citizens. We also pray for our citizens, our state, and our country, and ask for you to cover us all with your mercy, praise, peace, and love. Just keep us in your loving care as we build out our daily lives. Pray for all of these things, and we intend to use the same thing.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving on down the list. Number four, announcements. Any announcements? Robin Myers?
Okay. This Saturday, September 20th, will be the annual Bike Challenge Bicycle Rally, and they will be coming through West Waukegan. They'll be westbound on 276 towards Quinlan. I think there'll probably be approximately 500 to 700 cyclists. We don't have that many that come through here, but that's usually about the amount that they have that registers from the race. It just kinda depends on the day, how the weather's doing, or whatever. Sometimes they'll have 800, sometimes they may have less than five. But anyway, they'll be here between the hours of around 9:00 to about 1:00. So kinda be watchful for them, just kinda be aware that they're out there, because we just want everybody to be safe, us and them. The bridge is kinda harrowing. We get a lot of comments about, you know, it's kinda scary coming across that bridge, because there's nowhere to go if your car's coming at you. So anyway, we just want them to be safe. It's safe. The chamber's gonna be serving snacks and waters and watering things to the riders, and they'll have some entertainment there. This rest stop, I think this is the eighth year for that rest stop. I've participated in it every year, and we are on the two longest bicycle routes, whether it was 75 and a nearly 100-mile route. So by the time they hit here, they are hungry, and they're tired, and they want something to eat and drink. So we just wanna make them feel welcome, and they always vote, our rest stop here in West Waukegan, it's up through the chamber, they always vote as number one. They love our rest stop more than any other stop, so we wanna keep up that little accolade for us. Also, if you wanna contribute cookies, or snacks, or protein bars, or anything, you can bring them here to City Hall, or you can take them to the chamber. Also, Gospel Fest, our auxiliary and the fire department will be presenting that on Saturday, October the 4th, in the City Park. We, from noon to 5:00, we have now confirmed five different vans. They are, they're pretty well-known. Some of them, we've got one that's coming all the way from Arkansas this year, and so we'd love for everybody to come out and watch that. It's free to the public, and auxiliary will be selling hamburgers and hot dogs and all the extras by donation. And if you wanna come, bring a long chair, a blanket, or if you have a canopy that you wanna sit under, if the sun's out and it's a little warm, you can do that, too. And just come join us for a really fun afternoon of gospel music and fellowship. And also, if we, if the weather's in climate, we will cancel the event, because they have, they bring their own equipment, and we just don't want anything to happen to that, and they all know that. We've told them all that. So, and we will not reschedule, because they're on a tour, a circuit, so they can't reschedule again before the end of the year.
Like 12 to 5:00, or something like that?
12 to 5:00, yes, and we wanna make sure that while they're here, even though we're selling things like that, that we kinda promote some of our businesses, too, because in the bright times or whatever, we want, we want our city to benefit from it as well. So, anyway, it's all have, thank you.
She, she brought up Cotton Patch Challenge, and we're gonna have extra people out there? Any other announcements?
Um, we'll see. We got Fire Department doing their trick-or-treat on the 31st, 5 to 8, and City Park, 6 to 9.
Can we get the luce to those two things on the city website? Okay. Pretty quick, because I'm getting some questions, and I had to go look for it today, and it was a struggle. I'm not very good at Facebook, so. Yeah, but I didn't know that that's, I didn't know y'all were doing it. I knew there was one, but I didn't know it was the West Waukegan Police Department, so I didn't know to go look at the West Waukegan Police Department. So, once I found it, I was good. Oh, hey, it's the West Waukegan Police Department. It was finding it, but I knew if I went to the city's website, we would, should be able to find it there since it's, since it's stuff.
Any other announcements?
Yeah, Luxon Community Church is gonna have a vigil Thursday at 7:00 PM for product cart. I'd ask if we announce it here.
Any other announcements? Moving on, number five, citizens' input-related and non-related agenda items. I've got one turned in. Is this the only one?
Yes, Father. Hi, thanks, Council. For all of you that know, I was in commercial construction from the mid-'80s till I retired just a couple of years ago, and I just wanted to, I don't know where we are on the waterline, and I know it's on the agenda tonight, because I'm not sure exactly what I'll let you talk about, but I do really encourage that there be a utility contractor involved in that, because I was involved with an expansion and remodel of the YMCA over in Rockwall several years ago, and the utility contractor played an important part on waterlines along the highway over there. I just wanted to put that in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other citizens' input? That will move on. Number six, discussion and/or action on update on the waterline to Tawakani Plaza Drive. J.D.?
All right, we got, we got all our material ordered. It'll be delivered Monday. Tuesday, we have our bore schedule, because we have to bore, we can't cut through their brand-new concrete drive. We gotta bore. Well, that did extra, that did add an extra $2,500, but Grady did work with us, and he brought that price back down to under $100,000. We did get all our material. Our material cost was $37,192. The bore course was $2,500. Grady's labor's $10,007.
$007? $10,007?
Yes.
Okay.
And the sand is $50,000 for the sand and gravel.
And the sand and gravel is based on an estimate that we won't, that's a not-to-exceed number, is my understanding. So, not-to-exceed number is $50,000, but if it comes in at $41,000, we only pay $41,000.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, and so that's gonna take care of the whole thing. Now, the only potential challenges we have is, of course, weather. That's a potential. And if the equipment becomes a problem, Grady said he will help us with that. And easements, all, all necessary easements, they've been acquired already.
We have all the permits we should have. We have all okays. We have all of the documentation from everybody that we can go out there and start digging holes.
Yes.
Okay? And material's supposed to be there on Monday. So let's say, and the bore's supposed to happen on Tuesday?
So we're gonna start, we'll start Wednesday.
So the bore can happen before the material, if we were, if the material's delayed three days, the bore could actually still happen, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The bore's gone, it still happens. I mean, weather depend on that, too.
And we will start on Wednesday?
Wednesday, yes. That's the goal, anyway.
That's the plan.
The plan, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
What's the estimated time to complete it?
Three weeks.
Any other questions for J.D. in regards to the job? Like we said before, as a council, as a city, we're gonna succeed together, fail together, so anything you need, make sure you let us know. We're gonna move on from there and go ahead and move into the budget workshop. Ramsey, I understand you got some information you wanna share before we get started.
Yeah. I know we have, we've been focused really hard on revenue and expense, but I have been doing some work on the, on the balance sheet to see what other resources we have for projects over and above, over and above our, our regular, normal budgeted expenses. Things like, you know, if we wanted, if we wanted to look at some type of improvement for the water system, there's, there's a lot of money there that's been paid in, if we really, we owe it to the people to use that money to make this system better. So what I've, what I've done, first, Mary worked with me, and we went through, and I found out, it's a simple reason, that there was a mismatch between bank statement and fund view. And that is, it's just the two systems. There are multiple accounts at the bank, and the bank is interested in how much is in each one of those accounts. Fund view is keeping one consolidated account. And so when the bank sees a check go out from the water department, it comes out of their little bucket. And when a deposit comes in, fund view sees it going in the consolidated account. And so that has, that has caused that mismatch. And in fact, you know, there's gonna be some, there's, there's always gonna be some cleanups, but I believe that we can, I believe that we can rely on the figures that are coming out of the, the balance sheet. What I did is, I, I looked at the current assets, cash, receivables, CDs, things like that. And then I took, took into account our payable, accrued payroll, all, all the other things that are gonna be coming due within, say, a 90-day period. I came up with our total liability, so crack that out, it gives us a total balance, a current balance on general fund, $728,000. I'll leave off the odds. And, and water sewer, 2.23 million. We have designated some of that, we've designated, and y'all, y'all remind me if there's something here I'm missing. We designated $110,000 for admin salary on the, on the general fund, and then the, I wrote down 99.5, but it's 99.7 for, for the waterline project on the water sewer plant. We looked then at restricted fund, and there were, there were two Texas Water Development Board amounts that were on the balance sheet as liabilities. Mary, those two were, those two have, one was returned, and the other has been paid, or has been released to us, and that's, those funds are no longer restricted. So I showed zero restricted funds in either of those two.
The, so where you're seeing the 81, it's 78,000, and it's restricted to water sewer only.
So those, those truly would increase the available funds, but I did not increase the available funds in my calculations here.
Okay.
I just, I just noted that they're not, that that, those funds are no longer restricted. And then I moved and took annual expenses for each of the two funds for the, for the year, and set aside a three-month reserve of our annual expenses. And so that gives us an available fund, including set aside three months of operating as if we didn't take in a single penny. That gives us $325,000 to use from the general fund, and 1.7 million to use from the water sewer. And so I think the next, the next thing we've gotta do is we've gotta get, we need to come up with a priority list of what we wanna do with these funds. It makes no sense for that money to sit in the bank when we've had people pay that in and expecting us to make this place better. That's it. Question?
Good job, man. Good job. What's the, what's the, what are the red bars?
So the, so the bar graph shows, the, those are the, the checkbook balances at the end of each month, the, help me here, Gregor, those are, those are red and blue, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He's colorblind.
The, the red bars are the, are the water sewer funds, and the blue bars are the general fund. The reason I, the reason I ran those is so we could see what the lowest point was, so that if we pulled $325,000 out of the, out of the general fund checking account, we wouldn't find ourselves at the lowest point needing, not being able to clear checks. So in October, that's, that's gonna be our lowest point, and that was, the balance there was 477,000. And then, you know, of course, the tax collections and so forth pick up from that, from that point, but that, that's, that's the lowest point. So if we time our expenditures after that point, we have, we have an entire year to recover building funds or whatever.
Ramsey, this is phenomenal work. Let me just ask a couple of questions that'll help me understand a little bit, okay? So as I look at this today, we, you picked a three-month reserve, because that's kind of a general rule of thumb for cities that have expenditures, is to have, that you can, the rule of thumb is somewhat three-month minimum reserve, six-month maximum reserve, right? Something to that.
Yeah, I would say that'd be.
Yeah, because we want, we wanna make sure that we don't ever deplete the bank account so badly that we would not be able to pay the life.
Right, and of course, that'll never happen, because, well, it should not gonna happen.
Theoretically, it's not gonna happen, because we're always gonna continually have revenue from the water and from whatever, and they're gonna, you have the availability, the loan money from one fund to the other. So, so on this, so let's take this, like, $325,000 that's available for the, him out of the general fund. Is any of that money today encumbered or required to be spent on specific things? Like, we know that the park has $75,000 in its coffers that are from hotel tax. Is that part of this $325,000, or is that?
No, no.
So this is, this is.
Completely separate fund.
Park's completely separate, okay. That's, that's kinda where I was, where I was going.
And that was, that was real easy. There's, what, $67,000 there?
And occupants' tax, is that, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah.
Okay, occupants' tax, yeah, that's what, that's.
I think it was around, I think it was right at 74,000, 75,000, it might be 67, or whatever, but, and a certain percentage of that has to be spent on advertising of tourism, whatever, but it's not part of these numbers that we're looking at, right?
Okay, but anything to do with these.
Okay, because what we, what I, what, so kinda what I propose that we do is, I, I like the idea that we, that we create a priority list, but I also think it's important that we look at the things that we believe as a council are important to growing the city correctly, and then earmark funds for those things. But I would like to talk about those things as a council, rather than just throw noodles on the wall and wait for them to stick.
Absolutely. And I, I really think that, I think the time to do that is we get through, we go ahead and get through our revenue and expense, and then at the end of that, which presumably will be tomorrow, then we start talk, we start talking about, we start talking about.
I, I think that's a great idea. I think, you know.
Right timing, man.
Yeah, I mean, this is, because this is the time. One of the things that I believe is that, in that revenue and expense sheet that we've been working on, that Mary's been providing for us, is that there are things not budgeted that now that we know we have funding to budget for, we need to go in and put those things in the budget so that we can use that earmarked money for those things that need to be done in '26. The only way we get that done is if we, you know, if we don't, if we don't plan it, we can't execute it. If we can't execute it, then next year, we're sitting there with $2,500,000 in revenue. And this is based on, on, you know, I think we need to have, I just think there's some things that we need to clean up from the past, and I think there's things that we need to budget and plan for, for the future. And this is gonna help us do it. So, great work.
Excellent.
Phenomenal.
Any other questions on that? Mary, you looked over this, you agree with it all?
The rest part, like we're saying, there's still some cleanup that's in the process of doing, as our CDA's stood up for our next, the next audits coming in. Those numbers may fluctuate change here and there as things are being reconciled. I mean, it is pretty close to what information we have at this moment.
All right. So with that, we can go ahead and get started. We can just go down the list like we usually do, but we should be able to move through it fairly fast, at least, starting from the beginning.
Before we go into it too much, I did highlight, the green highlights are some things I changed from last week. It's gonna include the project for Across the Street, it's gonna include the garbage billing, the consolidating of that, and then further down, under the equipment purchase line item, and gravel and sand. So as you see those, that's what that green is making notes, so it lets everybody know what, those are changes that we've seen, that we have not seen yet.
Okay. First line item, $597,000 for salaries. That include the, the city administrator's salary?
Okay. $597,000, that includes the 50 that you, that you guys said don't want to split between general fund and water sewer for this.
So 50 of 50 of that is, is, okay. I do have one quick question, and that's on the employee insurance. Anybody have anything after those two? On the employee insurance, I showed it in, if I look at this correct thing, in '25, our '25 actual was, you know, $721?
That's not correct. It's something that Jeannie's working on cleaning those up, because I think they were being miscoded. She's still working on some of those. I've got a long list of things going on. But that will be the current, the 162 will be the number that will be paid, along with the, the insurance rate didn't change, employee count didn't change.
Let's take health insurance, right?
Yes.
Office supplies, you believe you're gonna cut in half?
Yes, there was a lot of extra spending, just beginning of the year.
Okay.
As far as previous employment.
Okay. We believe we're gonna cut that, more power to you, I hope you do.
If you go down into the green, the next green highlighted one is $34,000. That is going to include the $10,007.
I'm not there yet. I'm not there yet.
Oh, okay.
Let me get down there. Property insurance, you believe is gonna go from $8,200 to $18,000 is what we, we budgeted $17,000 last year. We spent $8,000, and we think it's gonna be $18,000 this year?
Still two more payments that need to be put into there, so the $18,000 is gonna be the annual for next year.
Okay, so you have those numbers already?
Yes.
Okay?
You have the contract labor yet?
Yep.
All right, what were you saying about the contract labor?
That is, for water, those are gonna include both our water contract license and the contract labor for Grady's, what, bracket cross street.
So his 10 plus?
$10,007.
Plus the license.
Yes, plus license.
J.D., do we use any other contract labor?
No.
Do we need any other contract labor available, any money available for that?
No.
That would use somebody for water or something.
That is, that's 24 in there. J.D., if we sell the pieces of equipment that you were talking about, will we need more in the rental budget than we have? $3,000 doesn't seem like much, that's a, a week of trencher.
No, we won't need any. I don't foresee us having to rent any equipment. The roller's not in there. We're keeping the roller.
We're keeping the roller?
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense, I'll keep.
Yeah, okay, yeah. All right.
What's the? City match grant.
For all the credit card fees from water and, from water bills, they're actually separated out.
The city match for grants, $124,000?
That is the maximum that we would have in the match plus any change orders for the plant upgrades. So the, the engineers don't foresee us getting to that number, but that is the absolute maximum that, that could be extended.
Do we have any other grants that could come online that could require more matching?
Not within this next fiscal year. We have one we're looking at, it's gonna be more on the general fund side, but it won't even come to fruition until '26, '27 fiscal year.
Bank card fees is that number that's, the credit cards being charged, people that charge there?
Yes.
It's going up by almost $3,000.
It wasn't, last fiscal year, it wasn't coded that way, so it's actually separated out the next fiscal year.
I know that the county charges a convenience fee. If you pay your property taxes with a credit card, they charge you that 3%. Have we ever looked at that? I hate to do that to the, to the people paying utilities, but it's a thought if we get into a.
It's a possibility. It was asked if we wanted to do it one way or the other. The customer does pay it, then we turn around and pay the credit card costs.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer that we didn't do that, but.
That option's there.
That option is there, okay. What's line improvements?
Lot of line improvements.
Audits.
I did increase the audit, that is an extra one. I increased the audits in hopes that we can get the next two to get us current, and with this one.
So I, I know that, that Brooks Watson, or whatever they are, charges us, and that is Brooks Watson, yeah, Brooks Watson. I know that they, that we've budgeted $8,000 a year for them. You and I had a discussion today about seeking alternative auditors. I would, I would encourage us as a group to make that an agenda item and get that done. I am, I'm underwhelmed with the response that I've gotten out of Brooks Watson, calling, talking to them about the auditing, and, and there's gotta be other places that can do it. You know, we need, we need some companies that are gonna be responsive to the, to the strait that we're in. I mean, we, I understand, this is our fault, it, you know, it's our doing, but we can't, we can't let the, the things that we haven't done on time in the past carry on, waiting for an auditor to do what we need them to do. We need one that will help guide us through getting current and then staying current. And there are, you know, and that's why, I think that's why we added that, we added an additional $20,000 in there for auditors, that, you know, that's where some of this excess money absolutely needs to be spent.
And that's why I would have included that highlighted green, kinda makes you guys aware of it, that's, that's my plan.
Yeah, make it an agenda item, you know, they're still on 2021, right? Still on?
They're wrapping up 20, 21, 22.
How long have they taken?
$100 billion company to do it in one year, you know, so.
It's taking them a long time, but it's not all on them.
Tesla does it every year, and they're a, you know, $3 billion company, so surely we, somebody can do our $2.5 million on it. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. What is CH Building?
City Hall.
Special Services.
Special Services is gonna be anything that is our Jacob and Martin Public Management, so engineering, our grant writers. In that one, there is a pretty good chunk in there, because we are gonna try to do our impact. In that one, there is a pretty good chunk in there, because we are gonna try to do our impact fee study and our capital improvement plan studies in that within this fiscal year.
What are you talking about?
Capital improvement plan first, then impact fee.
Which one is it?
Professional services.
Okay.
Fifty-three, forty-two.
Garbage fees, two hundred and seventy-four?
Yes.
So we pay that out to them? How much revenue we get in the practice?
Number four.
So if you look at the first page, it is gonna be the same, it's gonna be same in, same out. We do receive a franchise fee, and that's gonna be the only revenue we're gonna get from that.
Look at the, look at the, look at the page, yeah, right there, it gives you the, that gives you the same number coming in, but then we get a, we get a franchise fee.
On top of this?
We're not, we're not, there's, what you're seeing on there is not showing any revenue, additional revenue. The franchise fee is additional to.
Franchise fee is additional to this?
Yes.
Oh, this is just the billing and this is, okay.
So.
It's the billing and then the collection.
Right, one side's revenue, one page is revenue, one side, one page is, is.
Franchise fee is on top of, you know, that's mostly that.
Mary, going back up to the city building, you got twenty-five hundred in there? That include what we was looking at back there needing some work done in that kitchen?
There's not that, I've got any quotes on that yet. But there's still, there's some room with the general fund.
So we can amend?
We could, we could share that.
So I would rather not amend, I would like to, I would, I mean, I, I would rather put the money in now so we can look and use that money. I don't mind doing an amendment later, I just would really rather say, hey, if we're gonna do something, let's budget it. Because if we budget it, we can plan it, we plan it, we can execute. And so that, I'd much rather see us have a, if we think that there's ten thousand dollars worth of work that needs back there in the kitchen, let's put ten thousand in. If it, let's put it in there, let's plan on it, use it, because...
All game on that, I just hadn't had, hadn't, it hasn't been a priority to get quotes and things on, so I don't want to even put an imaginary number. We do have some best things that need to be taken care of here at City Hall. We have a roof. But there's a roof leak.
There's rated leaks?
Yes. And then there's some things back in the back room that I'd like to do, I'd like to have a seat outside of the bathroom. And kind of some reworking in there, but it's all not on the top of the priority list.
So I understand, I understand it's not on the top of the priority list, but what I, what I, what I would like to see us do is start planning for things that we wanna do, and then put those things in the budget, because trying to get money added to the budget takes a whole nother meeting, have a discussion at council meeting, and and rather than do that, I would rather have us budget things that we know we need to do. If, if ten thousand dollars doesn't cover it, that's fine, bring it to us, we'll do a budget amendment. But that gives you a number to say, hey, look, we have ten thousand dollars in the budget to do these things. Let's go get them done.
It also allows us to get started on planning it.
Exactly.
So, I think she needs to add ten to that mile.
I do too. I think twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, and is that, and I think we should probably look at getting quotes on, having the roof repaired, and having the kitchen done for that twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Because I, I just believe that we can get it done if we, if we, if we schedule it, plan it, budget it, and then do it.
Isn't internet an issue here too, right? Do we have internet connections inside?
Internet, we have internet.
There's two hamsters in the back running. It's good.
The difficulty getting, you know, cell phone signals, right?
We've got boosters, okay, so we've got boosters, and we've got to run new drops and networks, which is back in my office.
Is, but isn't all of Westewalk any somewhat of a weak cellphone zone? I don't get a great signal in my house, I'm a Ramsey doesn't do that. He has to walk out on the back, on the patio. But that's a, that's an AT&amp;T or Verizon or whatever issue, we need a tower. You have to, you gotta have a signal boost.
As we're adding it, I'm gonna go ahead and include it in there just so.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
You don't need a whole new page to print it out. So, I know we're going, that looks like a fine, so I can...
Right, we'll keep going while she's doing that.
I already added it, and then when we get to the end, we'll see what we need to bounce.
Nine improvements.
What's that? Line improvements, water line, water line improvements.
Well, there's several, but this right here.
Because remember, this is the water, so it's gonna be different than the general fund.
Anytime it rains, water comes in. Oh, it's, we have a, we have a highly water run after every door.
Alright. Anything else?
Yeah, plant maintenance, you know, we had plant maintenance, thirty-five thousand last year, we have thirty-five thousand this year, do we need more?
Say that again, I couldn't hear you.
The plant maintenance.
Do we need more plant maintenance?
Yeah.
This is just for the water plant maintenance?
This is the same as last year.
You got thirty-five thousand, is that where you want to be?
That's where I know.
You have a plan for that? You have a plan to what needs to be done, or is it just maintenance in general?
Not inclusive, not inclusive of anything that we would need to do outside of like, if there's something that we could upgrade, have better upgrade, you know, replace a pump early, or upgrade a pump, or... I think that's a, I think that, I think we stay with that number, and tomorrow night we talk about maybe bringing us four or five things that would be preemptive on a repair, maybe an upgrade, maybe a an enhancement, something that would improve where we're at today, and maybe preempt a problem two years from now. So in other words, if a, if we're straining a three horsepower pump, and a five horsepower would really help us out, if we have the money, let's do a five horsepower pump now, rather than when that three horsepower blows up. So, so if you don't mind, tomorrow, maybe spend some time and have, for tomorrow night's meeting, have five to ten things that would make good sense to upgrade and enhance in the water department, and, and in public works, and in, you know, roads and streets and whatever, but have, have those to come to us, because we're gonna depend on you to tell us the things that we don't know.
Everybody comfortable with the second page?
Yeah.
You wanna go to the next page?
Everybody good on that page?
Yeah.
Nothing really changed in the sewer department from the last meeting that we sent it to, but we're still filling in the knives and looking to it, we have gotten this far.
Contract labor, what's the jump there?
That is for our sewer license operator, we plan to be here a little bit more, more, but that's where it's increased.
Is that not back here in the contract labor in fifty fifty-eight?
We have a water license and a sewer license.
Thank you, good enough, got you. I'm with you.
The generators?
One going in and one going out, got it.
What?
The generators, generators.
The generators?
That's a new thing, right?
Yes.
Are we buying one, we running one, what's the repairing one? Okay?
Nine improvements. Sewer line improvements, ten thousand, is that enough? That's sewer line improvements, right?
I'm not anywhere near it.
We don't really have any.
We do, but I think that's a grant, kinda, it's a grant kind of expense, not a, not a budget expense. Do we have plant maintenance on the other side? The other page? Yeah.
Is that twice?
Yeah, well, I see, so we got fifty-three, thirty-five plant maintenance on page two. Twenty oh six, fifty-three, thirty-five plant maintenance is thirty-five thousand dollars. Okay? Or is this the sewer department plant maintenance?
Right.
So the second page is all, the third page is all sewer?
No, third page is part sewer, part non-departmental.
Okay, because then we have maintenance, we have plant maintenance on the, that's plant maintenance on the sewer.
Correct.
Okay. Can we, so...
Dash oh seven is sewer.
Okay, oh, got you, it's coded, got it, alright, I'm with you.
And the TCEQ fines and permits, are those for old issues that have been hanging out there, or are we racking up new ones?
Definitely old issues. Definitely old issues.
This gravel, sand, concrete, is that for?
Sewer.
What is that for?
Are you on the third page? What page are you on?
Page three is the non-departmental section.
Okay, that is gonna be the project cross street.
Oh, is that it?
I wanna go back to the TCEQ fines and permits. It's for old issues, right? So that, you're telling, so what you're telling me is, is that we have issues we have either not corrected, or we have issues we still owe for fine, we owe fines for.
You understand?
Yes, please.
Not correct.
So, explain to me what the ten thousand dollars is.
Well, that's to cover us in case they don't get corrected, then we, oh, in a ten month manner, just as we get a fine, they give us all the opportunity to fix that.
Sure.
So we don't have to pay. So, I mean, the majority of them were getting corrected, but if there's some that we can't, then...
Okay, so...
We have one we're currently working, might be a better example, but what we're currently working on, we received it last year, it's from a point one, point two timeframe, it was never corrected, and there was no response given, so they gave us this fine, entered council for a plan, we're finally in the process of that plan, but we still have administrative fines that we have to take care of, and they're not due yet.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with that, well, I guess my question is, if, if we have water money available tomorrow night, and that issue needs money to address it and correct it and eliminate those fines, we want to know that, we wanna know that, we need to, we wanna know, we need twenty-one thousand dollars to fix this problem that we're currently working on that has a fine hangover, hanging over its head.
Is that something that money will fix, or is it a, or is it a time?
Exactly.
Is it a time?
Better way to ask it, I think.
That's definitely.
Just cut to the chase.
For the most part, you want to eliminate, you want to fix the problem.
Absolutely, a hundred percent, but, but what, what I, I guess what I'm saying is, is that if there is money available to fix that problem, we want to get you that money to fix that problem. If it needs contract labor, it needs a contractor, it needs whatever it is that it needs, I would much rather spend that money on fixing that problem than paying TCEQ ten thousand dollars. A fine does us absolutely zero good, we still gotta fix the problem.
And we have our annual, in with the, there's also the permit line, we have our annual permit. It's our, it's on the annual permit, our sewer plant permit is coming due in twenty-six.
Uh, but that's it, and, and that's a, a fee we pay for the permit?
Yes.
Where is that money allotted?
It's coming out of that one, out of that line.
Out of that ten thousand dollars, okay.
Jacob and Martin gave you their quotes to do the permit.
Fines and per, fines slash permits, there you go, got you, okay?
What's IRIS?
IRIS is our emergency alert system. And that's how much we pay annually for text messages, emails.
You have, you have two lines, I'm going back up to sewers, our USDA phase one and two wastewater treatment plant, construction twenty fourteen.
Those should have been in, 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 those are the ones we're not using anymore.
Okay, that's fine, because we don't have, we had money in them in twenty-five, but we don't have money for them in twenty-six.
If you go down to the twenty-eleven account, fifty-three fifty-nine, or fifty-three sixty-nine, you'll see that's where I put it, it's all of our USDA payments.
Understand, but there's still no money in twenty-six in there.
Yes, but it's been moved down here. I combined all, because we had four to six different line items that had different loans. It's not making sense, it wasn't being coded correctly, so I moved them all the way down to twenty-eleven, fifty-three sixty-nine, with two hundred and sixty thousand dollars expenditure for twenty-six.
Got you, it's just in a different place, it's not, it's under non-departmental now, not under water and sewer, okay.
I got a question about the computer charge, why do we give so high, the twenty thousand, we're only spending like, well, three thousand and twelve thousand, that from the new?
Which one are you talking about?
The computer charge?
Fifty-two seventy.
Our fund view costs, our new, for our utility billing.
So that doesn't contain any, that doesn't have any craning money or anything like that for the fund fee?
Not, no, but that's just our annual services.
Twenty thousand a year.
Twenty, twenty thousand, but we don't, based on my research, we don't have code enforcement, the code enforcement module or the purchasing module?
That'll come out of the general fund.
Oh, I guess that's true, okay, sorry, wrong one. Wrong, wrong spreadsheet.
Same area, it's the spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's, okay.
The Mary, the SRA water purchase, shouldn't that be part of the water expenses?
It, it could be, it's just when Fund View took it, it was considered a non-departmental, so when they transitioned everything, it just stayed non-departmental.
We can move it into?
I can, yeah, I can move it up to water, as, I mean, if we so desire to do that.
I think that's what it belongs, it's just water expense.
We had engineering expense in twenty-five, we don't expect any engineering expenses in twenty-six. Okay, got you. I'm good.
The coal paint purchases, what are those, one hundred and seventeen thousand?
What's safety? What's safety?
It was free last year.
Probably, are we talking like, street cones and yellow vests and, and art apps and stuff like that? Okay, I'm good with that. I don't know that that's enough.
More safety vest up there.
Yeah. Gloves and glasses.
Art app.
Well, N ninety-five masks for the sewer line guys.
Asbestos line?
Yeah.
We're on a football helmet.
Football helmet, that's cool.
Alright.
Okay, so now, make it all pretty, but it's unbalanced, now we add that ten thousand dollars. Do we need to make a change? Where do y'all, where do you wanna make that change? We add the ten thousand to the city hall building maintenance? Or we wanna look at that tomorrow, once we start making some of the changes with the general list that's coming?
You can make it now, right?
So, yeah, so, so Mary, help me understand how I, where, where do I put the, I mean, we, you, what you're saying is, is we need to go, we need to go add ten thousand dollars into a revenue line. Right, so if we believe that the, if we believe that the carryover is, we think the carryover is two hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, is that a number that's etched in stone?
No.
Okay, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from sewer billing, we can make that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and it just balances the budget.
Yes.
Boy, this is great.
There you go.
I mean, if...
It's just like my house.
So, I mean, no, it's, so, yes, but if you, if you really think that the sewer billing could increase that much, it's all average billing, it's not really aligned, I think I would change too much.
Yeah.
If you look at it, we've already brought in three twenty-nine, that was as of last month's utility billing, so we would have one more month, and we ended up...
So what you're saying is, is that through eleven months, we have three hundred and twenty-nine thousand already in, we only budgeted two hundred and ninety-one thousand. We could go ahead and add that three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, we could say, next year's gonna be three hundred and fifty thousand, based on what we have today, and then we would be over budget, we would have excess budget. Well, I think that's probably a pretty good place to put it, if you ask me, if, if, if we got three twenty-nine through eleven months.
Seven months, three, or did it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thirty thousand dollars a month, man.
Yeah, I mean, I know we joked about it, but that seems like the most logical place to put it, is where we already have it. I know we joked about it, but that seems like the most logical place to put it, is where we already have it.
Yeah, I mean, we've got transactions in here already as of today. For sewer, so that. It's looking at three twenty nine, fifty eight, fifty six, that what I have here, three twenty nine, a, a little bit of a change since last night, that's. So I mean, that, that balances as it sits.
Everybody good with that?
Good with it.
Good.
I'm good with it. Yeah. We're only fifty four minutes into this.
Yeah.
But this was all, so, the. Go with that, when we post the agenda, I have to post the budget to go with it, so this is the only budget that was posted with it, so we cannot talk about any other budgets.
Okay, uh, that's cool, can we talk about tomorrow night?
Yeah. Cause this is on tomorrow, this and general fund is on for tomorrow.
Okay, so we can talk about tomorrow.
Right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, I made some notes based on what I thought we would hear tonight, which was. That. The. That we would have some excess fund. I don't necessarily wanna get into what my list of stuff is, cause I'd rather everybody in the room think on their own. Um, I would like to, if we could have tomorrow night. Um, if JD, if you could bring us five or ten things that are things we could improve, upgrade, use our surplus funding for. And I wanna make it very, very clear. Um, that my belief of the surplus funding is. Um. Not to spend it all because we have. My, my theory is, or my belief is, is that we owe the citizens of Westewalkany. Uh. Some improved services. And that we have the funding to give them some improved services with this surplus funding. And that it's our job to figure out what that surplus funding can pay for and what are the priority things to do. Without depleting it, because in twenty six, I wanna have this same exact. Um. I wanna have, have the same exact conversation with the surplus, what, what is, what's, what are the things that we didn't get to last year that we can get to next year? So in my mind, as a council and as the city workers and the city department leads. We need to know from you guys, what are the things that would help you be better at your job? Well, what are the things that we can give you that will help you be more efficient, be more, uh, productive? Uh, be more effective, and, uh, you know, Chief, I mentioned you at all, but, you know. I know the police department has bullet money, but do you need some other, is there something else that you need, you know? You know what I mean?
Can I exceed the ten?
Can you exceed the ten?
Yeah.
You can ask for anything you want, you can, you know, you can ask for anything you want. That, but, 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 but the reality is, is that there's a limited amount of money, well, but what we wanna be able to do is, you know, if, um. If, if there are problems on the, on two seventy six that you can help us curb, I know we had another accident last week, it was a fatality. If there is something that we can do that will help, um, improve that situation. And from a police department perspective, you can tell us what that is and tell us how we do it and what it's gonna cost and all that kinda stuff, bring it to us. Because I, I'm a city council and I, you know, I live here, that's what I do, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I trust you're gonna show up when I need you, that's what, that's what I trust. So, um, JD, same thing for you, Mary, same for you, Shannon, same for you, all of us up here. I, I feel like we need to have that, um. Uh, I, I feel like we need to have that op, we, we need to have that opportunity to sit and talk about what are the things that we can do. And how do we get those things accomplished?
I like it.
Mayor, I have a question, so Jacob and Martin, um, suggest a lot of improvements, right, do we have a list of things and expenses?
Comprehensive plan lays those out, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, the, 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 what, they were saying phase one, water plan, this, this, we have a.
That's all in that, that's all in that plan, that'll be adopted.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna just. But I, I do know one big thing for a thousand horsepower pump.
What is it?
Thousand horsepower pump.
Go tell me how much it is, go find out how much it is.
I called today, good luck.
I, you know. You might get eight hundred, I don't know. You may get two five hundred, Shannon's over there, she's got a whole list.
No, I'm just making notes, kidding. Uh, but yes, we could look at that comprehensive plan that we adopted and use some of those project plans, now, some of those are really big. Uh, expenditures that were like for Arrowhead, I know it was one on the list for water improvements, that's gonna be grant, that's not gonna be something we're gonna add to the second.
Yeah, and we do want to be really careful to, to keep enough. Funds so that we can leverage in a, in a grant.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If we can get eighty percent of it covered in a grant. We wanna make darn sure we got.
Exactly, and you're absolutely right, the comprehensive plan is exactly what we should be looking at, um, and, but I, I. To me, that's a, that's a, that's a grant money thing, that's why we need that reserve money in back. We need to figure out what those things are, and by tomorrow night, we should be able to come up with some kinda number that says, here's the pie we have, now, how do we slice it? Right?
Can we, can we budget a reserve for, you know, grant leverage?
Well, that's why I was asking what, what is in the, what's in the works and there's, if there's. If there's nothing that's gonna come online in the next, in the next fiscal year, then obviously we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have that constraint this year. But we do have, we do have to keep an eye.
When it's six twenty seven, we should be eligible again for CDVG. Uh, once we get this, uh, capital improvement plan and the impact fee study, those will both. Bring us higher eligibility for grants to get these big projects taken care of, so I'll probably get those two studies done. This fiscal year, so we can see what we can benefit in the twenty six fiscal year.
Do we already have, do we already have those two studies paid for or budgeted?
They are budgeted.
Okay.
They're under professional services.
JD, when you bring us a thousand horsepower pump tomorrow, you better bring us what, what improvements it's going to make for us. I have no idea what a thousand horsepower pump's gonna do, so I need to know, don't just bring me, hey, I want a thousand horsepower pump. Bring me, if we put this in, we are going to get this, 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 and this, and it's going to improve this, 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 and this for these. Seven hundred citizens in Westwark. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Don't just bring me the features, bring me the benefits.
What size pump do we have now?
So I'm gonna get forty percent better pumping?
Well, they, so we, when we did the original grant, we were gonna try to go for two new pumps. The grant, with the cost of everything, we were only able to get one new pump. So then they recommended us rehabbing one of them. And it being a good backup, but reality, I, or ideally, you wanna have two thousand horsepower, thousand horsepower.
The idea, the idea is to have, is to have something that is capable of, exceeds the capability, exceeds the requirements. And right now, we're right on the line of being able to, to, we're max, we're matching out what we currently have.
Correct.
Got you.
What are they gonna budget?
The wheels are turning everywhere.
They are. Hey Chris, I'm good.
Any other discussion on tonight's budget?
Good.
You know, do we need a motion to adopt this, or is that tomorrow?
No.
No, we won't do that till later.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, so.
Y'all have any changes y'all need me to make before tomorrow on this budget? I made those two small changes, I can give y'all those whole new papers, y'all want it? Y'all tell me, y'all want y'all wanna do? New paper, no new paper, use the same one?
New paper.
If we're gonna do a final approval, we'll wanna see it, so.
We won't do a final, final approval, uh, we can give it our own green light, but on the twenty third, we'll have a motion to approve it.
That's up to y'all, y'all need a new one.
I can do this, it's, it's nothing new, nothing different.
I can just bring this one back tomorrow?
You can bring, bring up. I can update the actuals, if there's some changes, I updated actually last week.
Alright, so seven thirty, number eight, motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Judge Webber.
Greg Sprinkle.
Good job, guys.
Nice work.
That's good.
Nice work, nice timing.
What timing?
Great discussion.